Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, welcome everyone. Um, will you call the roll, please?
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman. And Stevens.
Here. Okay, we'll move right to the clerk's report. Barb?
You have before you the council meeting minutes of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous. Uh, we have no old business tonight, so we'll move to new business. It looks like we have one ordinance.
Ordinance O ten twenty-one twenty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a binding letter of intent to purchase with MLH MSO Holding, Holco Inc., and/or its signee with respect to real property located at eighty-two forty-three North Main Street, Clayton, Ohio, and bearing parcel ID M sixty zero three two one zero 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 three five with specified contingency and declaring an emergency.
Is there any questions or comments on this?
Yeah, I just have one, Amanda. Under the confidentiality.
Yes, sir.
It says you can't tell any third parties and we're on next Monday night or Monday morning, I believe.
Yes, well, I mean, it's being live streamed on YouTube now. They are well aware of that. And when we get to the final contract, if we get to a final contract, that'll be changed.
Any other questions?
I'll move for approval.
Okay, I'll second the emergency.
To make the ordinance an emergency by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and is there a motion for the ordinance itself?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Merkel to approve as written, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. And it looks like we have three resolutions on tonight. You read the first resolution, Barb?
Resolution R ten twenty-one fifty-three, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute releases of mortgages relative to specified properties within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Is there any questions or comments for Amanda on this? For motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman to approve as written, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. Will you read the second resolution, please?
Resolution R ten twenty-one fifty-four, a resolution authorizing purchase of computer server and associated software and licenses and installation services at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand eight hundred forty-four dollars.
Chief Garver?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, coming before you just to request permission to actually replace our server for the city. It's actually a little bit over five and a half years old. Uh, with our contract with our IT company, usually our servers and our computers, we try to replace after five years. That's just due to speed, that's due to security issues and, and memory space. Uh, and with security these days, we try not to go too far with all these updates. Uh, anytime during that five years, there's just a lot of patches that have to be put on these servers for security. Uh, and once they go beyond five years, they really tell you, really increase your liability with security issues and just the normal day, every function. Uh, this was in the CIP budget for this year and it did come in under budget.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to approve as written, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. Thanks, Chief, for that. And will you read the third and final resolution, please?
Resolution R ten twenty-one fifty-five, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a renewal agreement with the public entities pool of Ohio, PEP, and Burnham and Flower Insurance Company, excuse me, group for the provision of property casualty and liability insurance coverage for November first, twenty twenty-one through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, with an annual premium not to exceed eleven thousand four hundred and ninety dollars.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Actually, that should be a hundred and ten thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. It's correct in the resolution, so we don't need to amend the resolution.
Well, that's not much difference.
Just a little bit.
Okay, all right, um, everyone get that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, is there any questions for Amanda on this?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve the resolution as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let the record show that's unanimous also. So we'll, um, we'll go to Amanda with our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, one, I want to say that we had our open house this past Tuesday, October fifth, for public safety and public works, and they did a wonderful job. We had a nice turnout. It was a great evening for it. I think everybody left happy. Um, so I was very pleased. This was my first year getting to attend because last year with COVID, we didn't do it. Um, and it was just a really nice event, so I'm very appreciative to got, to have gotten to be a part of that. Uh, we do have Sweep Clayton Clean on Saturday, October sixteenth from eight AM to noon, uh, over on Woolery Lane. Um, I would come early if you plan on coming because the, the bins do fill up quickly. Um, and then CCA Tax Assistance, uh, they'll be here Friday, October seventeenth from ten AM to two PM, and they will be in council chambers, walk-in appointments for anybody who wants to come in. Um, and then we also have costumes and carvings coming up Sunday, October twenty-fourth from one to three PM over at Meadowbrook at Clayton, and that's for, um, ages up to eighth grade. Yes? That's where we're walking is Old Salem and Main Street. Only one group of people, you mean, for the Clayton Business Walk? Well, we're gonna have, I mean, as many volunteers as we can get, and we'll split it into as many groups as we can to hit all of the businesses. No, they will. No, they will not all go to the same place. No, they won't. Um, well, since we're talking about that, um, so the Clayton Business Walk is scheduled for October nineteenth. Uh, we are looking for volunteers, so if any of the council members like to volunteer, I know Tina, you said you'd like to, and Dennis, you told me that you'd like to do it as well. Um, if anybody else would like to, just give me a heads up so I can let Jack know, okay? Um, and that'll be from the, um, I think it's starting around, um, what's it, eight in the morning or so, and we'll go through noon and meet with businesses. Around eight, yeah, I'm trying to see here. Sorry. Yes, AM, AM. But we need to meet here, we need to meet here first and, yes, so we will be meeting here first, getting into our groups, and then we'll go walk. It, it, yes. There we go. There you go. Just as a reminder, we have, um, we have a work session next meeting, October twenty-first, at six thirty PM to discuss multifamily development. Um, and then finally, if you'll recall back on September second, Elaine gave a very nice presentation concerning Meadowbrook. Um, our contract with our current caterer does expire in March of twenty twenty-two. Um, so staff made a recommendation that the city obtain our own food and liquor license and switch the operations, which I have listed out here in my city manager's report. Um, and if we are going to do that, we really need to start getting the ball moving now and, you know, getting things underway. So my question to council is, is this what you want to do? Do you want to try this path? Is there another option that you'd like to go with? We're looking for direction.
I'll throw my two cents in. I, I think we should explore this, um, but a- again, I, I don't want to put the brakes on because I, I think it's necessary that we do this, but we have to have a plan, you know.
Yes, I mean, there, we would have to go through a process of obtaining our own food and liquor license, and, um, there, there are several hoops that we'd have to jump through to get that secured and have things ready to go by March of twenty twenty-two.
So I would suggest we start that.
Um, yeah, there, there, if we need an attorney, there's an attorney in Columbus that I've worked with before on liquor licenses, but, um, you, you know, that's up to you whether you think you need that level.
I have an attorney actually in the same building who has experience with that as well, so, and that, that's helpful to have somebody who knows how to go through that process.
Do we have openings in November for a work session? I don't believe we have any scheduled for either meeting.
Um, I don't think anything is scheduled. There are no work sessions in November at this time.
Yeah, I think the only one we have left is one next, for the next meeting, so if we want to get this going, I have no problem saying that first meeting in November that we do a work session on it. I think it's proper.
And, and I'm only raising this because, um, I just know how slow things go. Uh, we, we may need to get going on this sooner than that if, if that's what we want to do. Uh, how about, I'm gonna make this, throw this out. We have a work session next October, I mean, twenty-first. Why don't we kick that one to the first of November and put this one in on twenty-first? If, if you guys want to do that, would that give enough time?
Yeah, I mean, either way, I don't think too much, two weeks is gonna make that much difference because it's, it's still a slow process. As you, you know, it's not gonna be quick to get through the liquor license process. It takes time, so.
I have no problem switching it. Do, I don't know, for, like, I mean, you know, we all kind of had some hesitations with some of the recommendations, so I think us having this workshop would be good ASAP. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That way we can give them some direction.
Everyone good with that?
We're pretty, we're pretty close with the police. Do we need our own liquor license?
Yes, we do, yeah. But I like the way you think outside the box. It's great. Okay, so we have the Meadowbrook workshop now on October twenty-first, and we will move our, uh, multifamily development workshop to November fourth. Is that agreeable? Okay.
But I just have a question from the standpoint of who has the experience to know how to run an operation like this in Meadowbrook? I don't think the city staff has that knowledge base.
No, we don't. So we would, the recommendation was not for the city staff to run the restaurant. The grill would operate as basically a snack shack, and us having our own liquor license would allow for, uh, well, one, we could, we could sell alcohol, but we could hire in bartenders on our own to staff events and to staff, um, the grill if we do have it open during the day.
Really, if you look at? This is basically taking Adrian out of the, out of the picture.
It is.
I'm just saying from the standpoint of if he's out of the picture and you're running a banquet operation, other things, persons that know how to run an operation such as that, so that we're not spinning wheels.
Right.
Spinning wheels and, and not getting anything done.
Right, so if you'll look, um, on the second page of my manager's report, if you go down to new expenses with staff and recu, staff recommendations, one of the additional expenses is a full-time event planner. There would be someone at Meadowbrook, full-time, taking care of planning outings, scheduling weddings, parties, all of that. That would be their job.
Yeah, I'm just thinking from the sample, who, other operations in the area, like in Vandelia and Centerville, how their operations run, who runs it, how do they get it set up, you know, all those behind-the-scenes starting parts.
Right, so when Elaine, um, began working on, you know, whenever we started pulling together the staff recommendation, one of the things that she did was look at all of these surrounding areas, all of the surrounding golf courses and what they did. And some of them, I mean, like Yankee, yeah, they have somebody full-time, they have a caterer there, but we're not Yankee. So, um, you know, the, the recommendation was for that first year that we have somebody there full-time to be an event planner, and then, um, for that first year, brides or whoever could bring their own caterer in, as long as they are a licensed caterer, they could use the facility.
So like the kitchen then would be reverting from a full kitchen to a warm-in kitchen?
Yes, absolutely, yeah, exactly.
What would be, well, and, and this is something to be discussed later, but what would be the overall impact just making it a viable, functional banquet facility?
Well, so from a.
That's something to be discussed.
Sure, and I can tell you from a staff level, we think that it would be more of a viable, um, a more of a destination for people to come if they could bring their own caterer, if they weren't required to use a caterer that we had on staff.
Amanda, I think these kind of things need to be discussed in workshop rather than, uh, where, where we are right at this point in time.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine.
Or we might as well go do it right now in front of God and everybody, you know, it, it's just.
No, that's the reason why if we're gonna have a workshop, you know, making sure that workshops would be functional and, and be getting something accomplished.
Yeah, so we can have that, we'll have that information for you. We have that information now. I mean, we use that information to formulate the recommendation that you have before you, so.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments on that issue? Anything else?
Uh, just one more. Um, the Charter Review Commission, we have received five, and I received an additional one, additional, uh, one today, um, resumes, I'm sorry, for people who would like to be on the Charter Review Commission. Um, when we did our, um, Government Academy last night, we made a pitch asking people to, you know, submit, and someone did from last night. So we need at least, um, three more people, uh, for the commission. So if you know of anyone, if you can make recommendations, that would be great. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, any other questions or comments for our city manager? Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to visitors' comments. It looks like we just have one quasi visitor here. Nothing tonight, Mr. Earl? Okay, well, we appreciate you, appreciate you coming in. Uh, we'll, so we'll go to council, um, comments. We'll start with Mr. Bachman.
Evening, everyone. Uh, really don't have much, uh, except for, you know, just the two events we had this, this week with, uh, with the open house on Tuesday and then the parade tonight. Just lucked out with weather, and it's really good to see a lot of the community come out and enjoy these public events again, so, and that, keep up the good work, guys.
Mr. Henning?
The only, I had, have one question to start. I should have asked the city manager's report. Do we know, um, s- Amanda and Martina, anything about the, um, what other municipalities are doing for stricter, um, guidance for zoning, if you will?
So I was actually talking to Amanda about this earlier today, and the specific one I was looking at, the one that was mentioned was grass cutting. I guess that's been an issue. And as somebody had mentioned, Xenia's grass cutting ordinance, and that might be a little more stricter. Uh, I pulled out their ordinance, compared it to ours. They're very similar. I also was able to, uh, have a discussion with the, um, law director for Xenia. So basically, they pretty much do what we do in that they publish notice in the newspaper at the beginning of the cutting season explaining exactly what the requirements are. If somebody's grass in Xenia, their ordinance says ten inches, ours says eight. So if their grass in Xenia gets over that ten-inch mark, then they send written notification to the owner to cut it. They have five days to cut it. If they don't cut it, then the city can go in. The second time that owner has their grass over ten inches tall, then they have already been informed via the notice that the city's gonna go ahead and cut it. So what they do is they cut it once with a notice. After that, they don't get another notice. If it goes up, again, they go in and cut it and charge back. What ours says is very similar in that we send notice. We do have a notice in the newspaper first, then we send the notice of violation. If there's a second violation, then at that point in time, we say, okay, on the third one, you're not gonna get another notice. Their says basically they have one notice, on the second one, they go in and cut. On ours, it's after the second notice. So it's very similar. Um, ours also, of course, has an appeal process because you have to give people the right to appeal, the due process, notice, right to be heard. So that can delay the process as well. I don't know if anybody files an appeal or not. I'm not aware, because I don't handle those in court. Those go to Vandelia Muni, and the prosecutor up there handles them. I'm not aware of anybody that does. But if they would, then that's gonna delay the process further because then they have the right to appeal, and that takes, you know, time to get through that process. Um, so basically, I, I think ours is very similar to Xenia's and some of the others. The important thing is you have to give them a reasonable opportunity to let them know they're in violation and then to correct it. So what you can't do is just, you know, say, okay, the grass is high and not give them any notice. Um, we have to follow that, and unfortunately, that ta, does take some time. As with most of the zoning violations, you have to give them notice and opportunity to correct it before you go any further with that process. Um, so that's where we are right now, basically.
Is there any way we could screen out, if there's any way we could approve that at the next meeting, for us to just do that once, and then the second time moving forward, we can just get it done?
I could draft, I could draft something up to that effect, um, since it's, uh, let's see, it's not the zoning code, it would be, it's the property maintenance code. If it were the zoning code, it would have to go to, uh, uh, Planning Commission, I believe, to get, uh, approval, but this is the, uh, this is thirteen, so that would be the extra property maintenance code. So that, that one, we don't need the D C approval. So I could draft something up and then have it for the next meeting, and you can decide whether or not we're gonna, you know, vote those things in. I mean, it will sho, it'll shorten it a little bit, but I don't want you to think it's gonna be, you know, a big, big, you know, like they're gonna be able to go in there the next day and cut because. Yeah, I think they do use the platform to give notice, you know, um, so.
Well, I've, I have a question on this. Um, I guess it would go to, I guess we need to talk to Darrell. Are, are we seeing a lot of the, a lot more of this, or what, what I, what I don't want to do, what I don't think we should do as a council is, if this is one person, you know, or two people, that, uh, why, I, I, that's what I'd like to know. If it's two or three people in the city that are really egregious on this, then I don't think we need to change anything. If it's, if, if Darrell says, hey, we're getting a lot of this, and we're getting, you know, people all over the place are doing this, then, then I think we have an issue, but I think we're, I think we're, um, amending things for one or two people, and I think, I just think that's, um, I don't want to use the word waste of time, but to me, it's something that's not necessary. If it's, like I said, if it's a lot of people, then I think we have an issue. If it's one or two or five, you know, of the thirteen thousand, then I think it's, uh, I would question why we're doing that. Yeah, I would say, I mean, amending, I would, I mean, I, I feel like we have residents, and I go to Amanda quite frequently, um, we have residents that, you know, I say, these individuals aren't doing their part for, you know, their street, et cetera, and it's the same individuals where the signs do go up. Um, and these residents do want to see some type of action taken. I think it's another tool in Darrell's toolkit, um, that he can use. Um, that's all I have for that. Well, again, I, I think we're, you know, I'd like to know what the numbers are, because no one, I gotta tell you, no one's called me. I mean, I don't know if other people are getting comments, but if it's the same people, then I think we maybe address it a different way, so.
Council has all of the information, and, um, we can go from there.
Like, if I can, throwing two cents on this. First thing, I'll, on a personal note, I'm not a fan of the yard signs. I don't think it's government's right to really be shaming someone for not having a good yard. I know I'm probably gonna be losing that fight, but they're off my libertarian soapbox. Um, second thing, you know, I can tell you, probably one of the worst violators in this community lives right by my house on Union Road. It's been done like that for years. I know the city has done numerous things. Uh, God knows, they've probably gotten hundreds of, probably over a hundred notices there. At some point, you know, there is a reality of what more can we do? It's not like we can, you know, go in there and arrest him or anything. There's always gonna be those properties. Um, I, I, I get what, you know, Councilman Henning's saying, and, and it, sometimes it is frustrating, especially when it's your neighboring, you know, and a neighboring property there, but, you know, it, I do kind of wonder like, well, what more can we really do on, on a few of these? I know we're gonna, we're gonna have some further discussions, but kind of wanted to get that out right now.
The only, what more can we do would be to see what, Martina just stated, if we can do that, even if it's only one step, um, and, and one extra tool in Darrell's toolkit to help him get these things done. I, I think that's one thing that, as to what more can we do, that's my thing. And then the only other things I had, Sweep Clayton Clean is October sixteenth. Um, I know I've continued to get inquiries that I share with Amanda of individuals who have stuff outside of their property. We'd love to see it, um, in the dumpsters on October sixteenth. So, um, please bring your unused stuff to Sweep Clayton Clean that you have sitting out. Um, and if you need help with that, too, feel free to message me. Um, I'm on social media, my email's public, my phone number's pretty public. Um, if you have, um, items outside of your house, I know plenty of people with trucks, and we would love to, um, use those trucks to help get that stuff off your property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to thank, uh, the staff that worked on Tuesday night's open house. It went well. I think it was well attended, lots of, uh, children that enjoyed the fire engines with the helicopters and the big trucks. Also, a very nice parade today by, uh, I don't know, Northmont Theater, I don't know, with, uh, probably a combination, and once again, we were lucked out with the weather, and Kenny just had it rain like crazy in Springfield that time, so thank God it was the Northmont Parade and not a Springfield Parade.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Merkel? Okay, thank you. Tina?
Um, I believe you did not thank, uh, uh, fireworks, Corgis, for donating the hot dogs and buns. So you need to make a shout-out to Corgis for their donations, and thank you for their support.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman?
It's gonna be a long time, Dennis, but I can bet.
Well, yeah, you're right. It would, it would be a long time.
And Dennis, in regard to what you're saying, I had two people last year spring that were in Florida, and they came back, and we had already cut the grass. Those notices were there, but they were not there to receive. And the one fellow said that he thought that he had somebody to cut the grass, but obviously, he didn't have to. And that, that would be, you know, somewhat of an exception, but yeah, something to get to. Because we're gonna get old one of these days, and we're gonna go to Florida too, Dennis, you know.
Okay, I just have a couple comments. I wanted to give Jack Coons, tip my hat to him again for the Government Academy. I think that's his baby. He really did a nice job. I happened to was able to come last night, and we got good participation out of that. And I, I just think that the residents that partake in this are really pleased with it, and just hope that we'll continue it and get as many as we possibly can. I think we had ten people this year at this time, and every one of them said that they were very enlightened, so it's really a good thing. So I appreciate everyone's efforts, the whole staff that participated in that. And I wanted to just comment, too, on the open house. Again, it's a, it was a fantastic community event. It's free, you know, the kids love it. They had a lot of, you know, I've never seen kids, you know, so happy to climb on a dump truck, you know, for instance. And the helicopter and all that's great, and, and the police dogs and everything, it's just, it gives people a chance to get up close to our, a lot of our first responders and others, not, not only ours, but the community as a whole. And just everyone just really raved about it, so it was excellent all the way around. Just comment on the parade tonight. Again, it's one of those things, you know, when it starts early like that, you know, some of us have to work, so some couldn't come. And we, every, I mean, everyone understands that. For the folks that did come, we appreciate it. I think it makes a good, you know, I'm not too much on the parade waving, you know, thing either, but I think everyone appreciates seeing us out there, and I think it's a good, nice gesture for us, so I'm glad we do.
You know, we do get compliments, not only from us, but most importantly, staff. I'm, I'm told all the time, like, oh, it's so great to see staff at this event. I didn't even know what's happening. So, I mean, thank you for the police and fire and service for doing things out in the community to really be our representative of the city for all these different functions that we do. We get told, I mean, that you all are everywhere all the time, so when we can't do that, thank you. It's, it's super appreciated.
I think, as Tina said about COVID, Mayor, we may want to thank those that cooperated in the open house, too. If there would have been a lot more walking room, had all those people hopped in there from, I mean, from Mad Heck to, to Goodson, America, and Miami Valley Hospital with the air force there.
Do we do, do we send out a letter or something to all the folks that participate? Let's make sure we do that. That's a great idea. Okay, that's it for me. Any other comments or questions for?
I'll move for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, all in favor?